I'm going to the chair leaning up against the.
I'll be public, public work.
I was just getting ready to sit up. Getting ready to right now. Thanks. Well, just so you know, this is intentional. We're cutting down your.
That's fine.
Speaking time.
Yes, sir. It takes me 10 minutes to say my name, so I'll just skip that part.
Okay.
That should put me right back on time.
He came down to check everything and then when he walked out, he said.
Yeah, we, we should be live now, so we should be good.
Are we good?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Call your session order. Mr. Hold the ground.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're here today to talk about seized large animals that Animal Control does such a fine job of taking care of. Mike Cass approached me, I don't know, a couple of months ago. We started talking about their challenge of when they have, when they have a case where they have to seize large animals, be it cows or horses or whatnot, comes problematic. And where to keep the animals until it gets to the seizure hearing. And it's also expensive to keep these animals. And typically what Animal Control is doing at the moment is, is either finding, you know, private individuals that will take the animal or whatever and paying for those services. So what Animal Control and the Sheriff's Office is looking to do is try to find a less expensive option. When this stuff occurs. So when Mike and I started talking, we were, you know, kind of going through what county properties might be suitable for that. Kind of came to the top of my mind that the property on the map that I just passed out seems to make the most sense, especially given the fact that the Sheriff's Department's going to be housed there. It's close by, they can keep an eye on the animals, that kind of stuff. So what I've given you is a proposed area of about 12 acres plus or minus that we'd like to discuss with the board about potentially using for this purpose. And I will also say that I've mentioned to the sheriff and his staff that this may be a temporary situation, given that although we don't have a master plan, the idea was that some of this property could be developed at a later date for additional county. Whatever we decide to do there. Anyway, that's a layout of what we're, we'd like to discuss with you about potentially using. And I'll let Agent Cass expand on that.
Thank you all. So this was an idea to try and be creative to overcome some of what we were experiencing on the front side. And it started a few months ago. Last year, we had two seizures that came from the same property in mine run. And it was a seizure of horses. And we seized a certain number to start. We discovered that one of the horses was pregnant when we got there. So we had a vet do an additional check on them and decided that the horse needed to be removed because her and the foal were in danger. And we had to keep those. The owner signed those original horses over to us and they went to animal rescue, to horse rescues. And we advertised it, horse rescues got donations, but we still had to pay for the horse and the foal. And then we had to pay for all the vet bills for the horse and the foal. And then we got the seizure through on the 10 days that were supposed to by law. And the lady decided to appeal it. That's why we had the request for the surety bond that you all approved last year to help cover that because we then had to pay for that horse and the foal until it got through circuit court, a circuit court hearing. And of course, all that time went by and when she got to circuit court, she went ahead and signed all the animals over and agreed to pay what, what we had. And we're getting little bits of that money back now. That horse and foal cost thousands of dollars. And it wasn't money that was in our budget. It was money that I found in the budget in different places that I'd used for things other than police work. Thinking about it, at that point, we realized if the horse rescues folded, what would we do with those animals? And that's only once they get signed over. So, you know, we, we have a useful farm. I think we, I think we ended up handing out about 90 horses or so. 10 of those were seized. Horse rescues took the rest. And some of those animals are still at horse rescues, I think, at this point. And if they fold up because they're not getting donations anymore because of the economy is, what are we going to do with horses? And in the meantime, where do we keep them while we wait for court stuff to come up? It's just the way things always work. A couple of weeks ago, we ended up doing a seizure of 80 cows and three baby calves from a place on this end of the county. Most of those cows are going to die in two weeks if we didn't do anything about it. So it's not a matter of whether we can take them, we have to take them by law. That's just the way it is. And then we have to find a place to put them. Right now, we've talked to a local landowner. Well, I think he's leasing the land, but he's a business owner. I'm paying $5 a cow a day in order for us to keep those. And of course, thanks to General District Court and the judges there, he decided that he wanted to give a continuance to the guy so he could get an attorney. So instead of the usual 10-day period, so if you add it up, the vet told us a day of grain, they all had to have grain, and we had to feed them every day. So it costs $460 a day. The first 10 days, plus all the transportation to move them from place, one place to another. Because we can move, you know, three, four, we could probably move 10, but we couldn't move 80 in a decent time period in order to get them where they had food and care. So we probably had about a $5,000 or $6,000 outlay of cash in the first 10 days. And then a judge decided he wanted that person to have a lawyer. So it's now been put off till January 29th, which means we got to pay for them every day from now until January 29th. And not only are we paying for food, we're also paying for the land that they're staying on. These things happen, we can't plan for them. I think last year, we had three horse seizures total for half the year. We had the one big cow one. We've had several ones with 200-plus chickens. We're averaging right now 12 animal welfare checks a day. And in the winter time, it's harder on large animals because there's not the forage that's out there. So people have to feed and you have the economy that we have today. Some people eventually, I mean, I think we're already hearing from some of them that, you know, they're having to make some choices about whether to feed their animals or whether to feed themselves. And all that ends up putting us at, in a hard position for what we have to do legally. And the idea of coming up with a livestock impound type area for us to keep them in was a creative way for us to save taxpayers' money at the end of the day. It's going to be a capital outlay in the beginning because all this land has fences on it. And we would certainly ask the, the board to help us get that underway so we could get it going. The way it is now, we could actually cut it off and have the whole thing available with a gate or you could break it off and have some for horse and some for cows, depending on whether it's a four-board fence or a three-board fence and some other things that go on. And I anticipate using some of our connections to the Montpelier Steeple Race folks and some of the other folks in the county, trying to raise donations so that we can have donated equipment that goes on this piece of property, such as run-in barns and stuff like that for horses when we have to care for them. In a perfect world, we would never use it because everybody would be feeding their animals and we wouldn't have to deal with it. But we don't live in a perfect world and these things come up at different times and different amounts. So we might not use it this year and we might use it four or five times next year. One of the thoughts that we've been kicking around was to talk to surrounding jurisdictions and find out if any of them might want to use it. Most of the places operate like we do. When the 80 cows came up and we knew that it was coming, we started contacting people in the county that we thought had enough pasture field that weren't concerned about whether some strange cows were going to infect their herd and, you know, cause them problems. And we lucked out and we found a place to keep them. On the last horse one, we had to pay. We just, we just seized five horses from the same person we seized horses from last year. And we had to find a place for them. Fortunately, I've got a connection, I've known since I was a game warden here, who is going to allow us to keep our horses there. But I believe it's probably going to be a donation of what that land would cost rent-wise. So, and once that property sells, we're going to have access to that. So this is something going forward, you know, nobody else is doing this either that I'm aware of. I'm not aware of any jurisdiction in Virginia that's doing this. This is kind of a creative idea. I'm not so sure. And I've got my ACO sergeant asking the other jurisdictions, if we put this up and it doesn't have our animals on it, do these other places want to rent the place upfront? So they donate a certain amount on a yearly basis for the upkeep of the place? And then when they send the animals there, we charge them per head for whatever time period. Not have to be cheaper than, you know, what they would get if they worked it out on themselves. And we'd have to have Mr. Latchey in his office help with drawing up documents that basically said, you can put your animals here as long as we don't need it. You have 24 hours to move them or whatever. And when they're here, they're your responsibility and not ours. We're just going to provide the land. But that would be one way for us to get a little bit of money coming in that we can use towards improvements on the place. We talked about pepper soil and water. I believe they've got a program that could be available to the county. We have to ask. For them, there is a creek on it. And I think they would provide some grant money towards fencing around the creek and maybe some automatic waters as well. So we wouldn't have to use the creek and we could save that. And that would be a little savings. And like Kirk said, you know, in the future, if five years down the road, you decide that you want to build something on it, we're just moving fence. We're not moving anything else. I think the bottom piece of this property is set aside because it's the airport runoff and we can't build buildings there anyway. It's historically housed cattle before. People are used to it from it being there. And it's uniquely located near our office. So we'd be able to keep an eye on the animals that are there and make sure that the ones that we have are taken care of. I think just from a little math, and I won't, like I said, Mr. Wade, I'm not going to, you know, you know more about feeding livestock than I do, but, and I'm not an expert. I know dogs, I don't know livestock.
I haven't done it for a long time, about now.
But yeah, I'm not thinking. But I thi- I think, I mean, from some of the people I've talked to, you're talking about what, one cow costs you about 60 bucks a month for hay, per cow, thereabouts. You know, the way we're paying for it now, it's going to be like $210. So although we're paying the money upfront, I think we'll save at the end of the day if we have too many of these types of cases. And like I said, we're trying not to, maybe we work with all these farmers ahead of time. We get, when we can go there and we see that they're in poor condition, but they're not about to die, they're not in danger of dying, we work with them and try to make sure that they do what they can do to get their herds back up. And we check on them and get them through. And it saves us from having to do many seizures. But there are occasions when we have no choice. And that's what this is set up to do.
A little bit of update on the, a couple of soil and water. I talked to Spencer Yager yesterday. He's talked to two of his bosses. One of them, I think, is for helping out with the program. One of them is against it. Basically, I think what he said earlier, we would basically have to apply and then go from there and see, see whether they would be able to help us with any of the fencing and the waters.
It's state law that requires us to take, take over these animals when they're in danger?
Yes, sir.
Is, what is our recourse? Let's say we take these 80 that you were talking about recently. Is that a liability and an expense that the taxpayers are just stuck with in the story? Or is there any callback recourse, anything that, that? I mean, I, I hope there's more to this story because, you know, in addition to the facilities you're talking about and fencing and waters, you've got to have loading facilities because you can't just turn them, turn them loose and, and hope that you'll gather them up someday. That kind of, they're not trainable in that, in that way. You've also got to have feed storage, you've got to have equipment to do the feeding. I mean, it's, this thing mushrooms really quickly. You're talking about starting a small farm. And you have to, you have to see it that way.
Not entirely, sir, because we're not, you're not talking about running this like you do your farm every day. You're talking about running this for 10 days at a time, as long as the judge operates within.
Where are you going to get 10 days worth of feed?
We can call a co-op and he'll deliver it for us.
How you going to feed them?
We got, we've got the ACOs that are there for buying small bales, we can get, we can get it out.
You mean, how many small bales, 80 cows would eat per hour?
But it's not always 80 cows. Yes, sir, but it's not always 80 cows.
I mean, it's, this is a potentially a fairly substantial investment to get it to the point where it's workable.
Well, these, the 80 cows that we're doing today are going to cost us about $18,000 at the end of the day, by the time we get to court.
And I think that's the conversation that we brought up. I mean, is that, is that a liability that we're just absolutely stuck with, with no?
No, no, you can go after the owner. It's just a lot of times the reason the owners are in this situation, they don't have any money. And so it's the collecting and getting judgments, court judgments, those kinds of amounts are difficult.
To, to get back some of that money, basically if the court grants those animals to us, then we will sell those 80 cows.
Which probably what should have happened much earlier.
Correct.
Before we get processed, yeah, before we even got there.
Correct. Yeah, so we have that. And then, of course, when the commonwealth attorney participates with us, we will place the charges. They ask restitution when they get to court. That only works as long as the courts get restitution from people. Anything that isn't collected, if they do all their time in jail, then there's, then the restitution is ineffective essentially. And so then it would be a matter of suing the people if they've got land or whatever the case may be in order to try and recoup some of that money.
Well, to me, there's two different questions here. And I wish that you all had brought the first question to us and then maybe let the board think about the answer to the second question. Because there's, there's the question of, do we want to have a county facility? That's a reasonable question to ask and that's something the board needs to work on. But then the second question is, where do you put it? They're, they're not, they're not the same thing. And, and you can, you can be in favor of having a facility, but think this is a terrible place for it. So first of all, I'm not convinced that we need a facility. That would be, that would be number one. Because I think we need to look at, at what the options are in terms of continuing the way we're going and what will it cost to, to do it this way as opposed to the way we're doing it now? And then, and then, and then, so, you know, I need a lot more information than I've got so far. I need to know some scope of, of the whole thing. I don't want to hear 80 cows and 20 chickens. I need to kind of see what this is actually costing us on a, on a yearly basis. And then, then you kind of have some kind of an idea of, of whether it would be a good idea to go another way. As far as the location, you know, we paid a good chunk of money for that land. We didn't, we didn't buy that land to run a stockyard there. And I think right on Route 20, right at the end of the runway, I think it's right beside Booster Park, it's just about the place for this. And we could, if we decide we want to do this, you know, we can find a place that's well off the beaten path that would be appropriate for this type of thing. But I just think this is a, this is not an appropriate place for it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think you're right. Obviously, the way this evolves, it, it creates a problem. Creates a problem in terms of taxpayer money. Creates a problem in terms of we would be responsible for the animals and therefore we have to treat them, you know, at, at least as good as any other farm in the county's got to treat them. Because we, we are to be scrutinized, I guarantee you, so.
I would like to say though, operating the way we are is pretty stressful and it's us because at the last minute, we're having to find people who agree to house these animals. This isn't like their business is set up where we can go and we can say, hey, we got X number of cows, how much you're going to charge us for it? We, we've got to be pretty lucky in order to be able to figure out how to do this. And these things get sprung on us without us having any knowledge. I mean, these 80 cows, we had no idea there was a problem until we got a complaint.
But I guess that's where I would start, is the thing.
But there's, but there are other options besides doing it the way we're doing it now and doing this. There are other options.
Like what?
Well, well, set up a, go to, find the landowner who's got some appropriate land and who, who, who does not use the land for anything except grazing purposes and have an agreement with them.
Or, or even going out for bids on people saying, if we had to bring back cattle or large animals to your facility, what would you charge? And try to have some agreements on that in advance. And some people say, we'll go in and out and things like that. But keeping sort of a cadre of, of available people who would be, you know, so we're not searching for it at last minute. We actually have some who have signed up to do that.
Or you might even have to pay a retainer to, to keep it open. I mean, as an example, it's operated again, but the facility at Orange Livestock Market, you know, there's, there's a situation that is, you know, an existing operation. It seems to me that on an emergency basis, if you had to, I don't know about the numbers, but, but a fairly substantial number of animals could be taken there and under some kind of arrangement carried for.
That's who we're going for right now.
And I, I, you know, I know that was, I use that example only because it's nearby.
Well, we went, we went through Mike Knight. And he actually has them housed in one Miss Taylor fields, or Hal Taylor's. I'm sure Miss Taylor or Hal Taylor.
Right.
One of their fields. That's where he has them now. So, and that's the cost we're paying now.
Yeah. But I would also like to, you know, there, there must be some creative way of dealing with this much earlier. You know, to me, the, the seizure part is, it's a failure on all sorts of fronts, obviously. Starting with the owner of the animals, actually. That's where the blame has to fall. But, I mean, to me, there are, can we do an ordinance that forces a sale, for example? Earlier? I, I mean, I don't, I'm, I'm just, I'm struggling to find a way because I, I'm concerned about the animals. I'm also concerned about the cost. And if this, it takes quite a while for, for an animal the size of a cow to go from healthy to near death.
Yeah, yes, sir.
That's not an overnight neglect.
Yes, sir, over horses too, for that matter.
Large animals in general.
Except the problem is, we don't hear about it until, like, we didn't know about the cows until we went out there. And the vet said, two weeks and these cows are dead. There's nothing we can do to try and deal with that beforehand where normally, like I said, we're doing, we're doing 12 or so large animal welfare checks a month now.
I understand, but that.
And when we do it and they're not that close to death, we're the first ones to say, hey, this is, let's get this thing going, you know? We need to start getting food. Where are you getting it from? What vets are you talking to? Because we're trying to escort them into getting those animals back so we don't have to interfere in that way.
And that, and that's appropriate. The, the near-death situation seems to me ought to trigger, you know, an emergency that, that gives you guys, you know, different kinds of powers. Like sell them that afternoon, for example. Now, you know, you don't have that power today, I understand. But, but there, that needs to be treated differently because you don't have a lot of time in that situation.
Problem is, there's nothing in state code that gives us the power. I mean, he's got to follow his normal processes for seizing property. Everybody gets their day in court.
I, I don't, I mean, I'm, I'm going to be very clear here. I'm not saying there's not a problem. And I'm not saying we, we shouldn't address it. But I, I need more information on the, on the problem and a better feel for what we really need.
I understand, I, I call.
Just, just so.
Yeah, calls.
Our intent today was just to find out if the board had, was receptive to this. And we, we know there's a lot of questions and answers we don't have yet. So we weren't really seeking.
Approval.
Approval today. We just kind of wanted to start the conversation.
When I, when I first reached out to the interim county administrator, I advised her of the issue that we had with the horses at the time and how much money I was finding in the budget to pay for that. And was there any county properties available? And that's exactly how I wrote it. And was the county interested at all? So that was all communicated directly to them. It wasn't, it wasn't like we.
I don't believe you, Mike. I didn't believe anybody. I'm just saying.
I, I think back to Mark's thing, there's two, there's two different questions here that need to be dealt with, even though they need to be dealt with separately, but come to the same final conclusion. And the first one is the property. Oh, and I don't know, I don't know if mountain track roads.
If we put wells for water or else we're chucking water.
That's all wooded though, isn't it?
Well, yeah.
I mean, we'd have to clear.
I guess what I'm saying.
I thought it was 100 acres, I think.
Might need to look, well, and see if, what the cost would be. And, and also going out and, and talking to the people in the county who have the land, who might be wanting to take it and try to work out an agreement ahead of time. So you're not trying to do it when you've got the vet telling you, these guys got to be moved immediately. So if you had, let's say, two or three on retainer that says, yeah, we'll take, I'll take up to 15 cows or up to 10 horses and have that available as a, as a resource. And we're just a matter of some sort of retainer to keep it there or just continuing to communicate with them to say, yeah, is this still good with you?
And, I mean, you're only asking here for 12 acres, which I think is probably a little tight.
It's going to be more than tight on this 12 acres because what you're, if Mr. White can correct me if I'm mistaken, but if you're talking about doing the fencing off of wetlands.
35 feet on each side of the.
You're, you're down to probably six acres before you ever get started with the lay of that land there.
And unless you're going to put them, unless you're going to put them at pins and not let them graze at all.
Well, ultimately, the idea was to have a piece of land where we start out with, you know, so whatever we would get would be better than nothing. I mean, right now, we've got, note, we got space for a horse at the animal shelter. So we got nothing now. So if we started with a fenced-in area, we're starting better than anything. And then if we could raise donations to break it out, then we could break it out into one-acre paddock areas or whatever we wanted. Because we also can't seize horses from multiple places and they keep them in the same place.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
They've all got to be separated. They've all got to be separated.
But what about the, the fair committee? The fair rounds? Just a thought. I mean, they've got a lot of land down there. It's not all used on a regular basis. And maybe that's something that.
That would be one of the options.
Right, just, just an, as you said, this is a work session, this, we're looking for ideas. The fair committee may be a very viable solution. They may be willing to provide land and, you know, they work with 4H and extension and everybody. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think that we're regularly looking at dealing with 80 cows either. I mean, usually, usually we're, we're talking about four horses or 10 cows. It's usually not 80. I mean, this is a extreme case, but it's an extreme case that's going to hit the budget in an extreme way that wasn't planned for ahead of time, so.
And I guess part of the question is, does that justify an annual budget for a county farm? It's pretty much what it comes down to.
Mike, have you been, have you been, you've been funding this out of the existing sheriff budget?
Yes.
Well, I mean, that's another thing. I don't, I don't have any expectation that you do that. I mean, I think this is not something you count on going into the year. And this is not really, you know, this is something that's kind of foisted upon you. I, I think, I'm pretty sure this board could come up with some money to, to make the sheriff's office whole on this. So I mean, that's, that's, that's not the issue as far as I'm concerned.
Yes, sir. I try not to come back and ask for money. I usually pay what you give me.
Weird things happen. And you have things like this, this, you know, laughably named piece of farms over here. You know, that just comes out of left field and bolsters everything.
And I also think you might need a couple of different approaches because the 80 cow scenario, that's one that my first reaction would be, what can I do to keep the animals where they are? Bring in a crew that feeds them and cares for them and, and everything as they are? Because moving them is stressful and all these things. You know, one or two horses, maybe you have a facility that you deal with that. So you, I think you're have to look at it in a couple of different ways. Because you can't do a lot of mixing.
No, sir. And I, I don't think the vets are recommending that those cows stay there because of the conditions they were in. And I, I, I don't think the vets are recommending that those cows stay there because of the conditions they were in.
So maybe-
Because it wasn't just them who was taking-
This was, this was a, this was a 124 acre farm. Twenty of it was grazable, the rest of it was woods. And the man had probably over 100 wild pig, or, excuse me, pigs running on it. Many of them have turned wild. They've torn the fields all to pieces. I mean, it is, it is just, it's a mess.
So you end up having, having to move them?
Yes.
But I would imagine there are a lot of situations where you wouldn't necessarily have to-
Right. And we, and we try to do that, except in order to do that legally, the owner has to agree to it. So then we're taking them to court, dealing with them as, um, you know, starving animals and animal cruelty. But then you're asking them to cooperate at the same time.
We also try to get these people to, when we seize them, to turn them over to us. If they're willing to turn them over to us, then we don't have to wait 10 days to go through court. We go and sell them and get rid of them. In this case, this man would not give up anything.
And now we got the judge giving them an extra 23 days on top of it.
I would suspect that, uh, that the thought of animal, animal cruelty charges and a bunch of other things might tend to make them cooperative in terms of, of, yeah.
That's some of the, pieceable farms is a perfect example. Okay.
Some, sometimes.
We, we've got-
I'm just running into financial trouble.
Let me ask one more. I want to get one other question for Kirk. Have you, have we looked very closely at the animal shelter site? Is there, there's area there that could be used?
Honestly, no, not outside of what we've already done. I, I know it would take some clearing. And I was just standing there thinking, while we were having this discussion about, there's landfill property around the backside of that. But I really need to look into making sure that that's an appropriate use if we kind of ended up edging out on the landfill property. Unless it's closed, that's it.
I mean, I'm just looking at the, I'm looking at it on the side. I'm, I'm looking at it on this, this computer thing here. And, um, you know, it, it looks like there's a wooded land. I'm assuming it's not a landfill.
Correct.
And so there, I would say there's probably close to 10 acres there.
That's probably right.
Yeah, because that was a site that was discussed for the public safety goal there originally.
That's correct. It was one of those considered, that's correct.
Discussed.
You're not going to be able to make it a site that you have to graze and you have to feed.
We're, we know we're going to have to feed.
Be full feed, it wouldn't be grazing. So the fact that it's wooded or whatever.
Wait, what if it's only one or two cows? Because that's generally what we're talking about, not 80.
Yeah, but I, yeah, that's, sure, they, they might be able to graze sometime, but that's-
And it would be occasional. So it's not like we would have animals on here all the time, um, generally. There's times when we have multiples, like this time we got cows and horses at the same time. Frequently we'll only have one or the other. Generally, these seizures are less than 10.
How do we move them? Do we pay somebody to truck them?
When they're fewer, when they're-
Why not call those 80?
When they're fewer than 10, we, we have a trailer that we use to, to move them a few at a time. Uh, we might pay people to help us get them corralled up or whatnot. Um, I think in this case, on the 80, we actually rented a portable pen, I think, that we're chasing, that we're chasing the cattle in to, to push them onto the trailer. So this is a rather large operation, um, because of the number. But generally, when it's less than 10, we're moving them two or, two or three at a time if we, if we have to move them.
It appears to me there's about eight acres there that could be, that could be used between the shelter and the, and the landfill, all on the, you know, the eastern side of the road.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and start looking at options? And we can come back for a work session.
And I'll, I'll check, I'll see what we can find on the farmer's side. It's a little bit, it's a little bit difficult because many of those people have herded cattle and that's what they're doing.
And they don't want to mix any other cattle in with them. I just think-
The cattle that we seized the other day, they had, they were in poor worms. They were all kind of problems with those cows. And you would not want to put them in with anybody else's cattle.
Okay, so, um, if staff can work with Phil Thomas to, to look at some of this. We've got another work session item. Probably going to take it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Mike. The second work session item is the-
Second verse, same as the first.
Yes, Animal Shelter Veterinary Services.
Yep, um, thank you. I have, I have Gina Elizabeth here, um, our, our two full-time animal shelter employees who do a great job out there. And, and they're here to answer technical questions because some of this stuff I'm not going to be able to answer. But I can paint the picture. And the picture's this, we're in a bind with veterinary services. We've been there for a while. Uh, we've, we've been, uh, blessed with Dr. Jacobson for, for quite a number of years. And she has her own mobile clinic that she brings out to the animal shelter. And it saves us a bunch of money. Well, um, Dr. Jacobson is semi-retired. She's coming back for hours. We've known this for a little while. Uh, we've done two solicitations and we can't get vets to even respond. We got to have a vet.
Kirk, can you give one clarification?
Sure.
Is she semi-retiring or is she retiring? But there's a possibility of only semi, if we can work something else out.
Well, in my discussions with her today, I think she's still going to do a little bit of something, even if it's not with us. I mean, she's not going to completely quit. But if, if what I'm proposing to the board works out, then that's exclusively what she's going to do. And so what, what we, one of the solutions, and it seems to us to be the best solution is, uh, Dr. Jacobson, as far as her semi-retirement, is going to sell her clinic, her mobile clinic. Whether we buy it, somebody else buys it, she's going to sell it. When we looked at all the options, it appears to us the best option is for us to consider purchasing that clinic and keeping it at the animal shelter. In addition to that, Dr. Jacobson has agreed to a two-year agreement with the county that she'll, she'll work one day a week and do surgeries and those kind of things. And in those two years, that gives us time to figure out what happens after those two years. The reality of it is, is if there is no clinic at our facility and there is no Dr. Jacobson, we're at the mercy of whoever will agree to see the animals that we need to be seen on their schedule and on their price range, which is going to be extremely more expensive than what we're paying right now.
So she's going to be there one day a week, but, but also for emergencies or, or just one day a week period?
Possibly emergencies, and Gina can speak better to that. But there's going to be cases likely when it's not day, Dr. Jacobson's there, we're going to be forced to, to find other veterinarians that can assist us if that particular emergency, when if that emergency occurred.
Where, where, where is she located?
Yeah.
Oh, she's in the cattle field?
So, uh, she was working at the shelter today. I spent a fair amount of time out there speaking with her, looking at the unit. I mean, we've looked at this unit all pretty well. We feel, again, we feel like it's the most viable cost-effective solution that we can, that we can come up with.
Can you bring Elizabeth into the picture?
Sure.
Bring her into the picture as far as what part of the solution may be.
So Elizabeth has worked with Dr. J since 2004?
Yes, sir.
Um, she's now working for us. She, she's been part-time with us for-
I've been part-time at the shelter for almost eight years.
Okay.
Um, and worked full-time with Dr. J. However, now I'm full-time at the shelter and part-time with Dr. J. Yes, I'm tickled of that.
You're, you're able to, if I understand properly, you're able to do everything except the surgeries?
Yes, sir.
Operating under her license?
Yeah, if we have an animal that comes in and needs blood work, I am able to pull the blood, run the blood, um, call Dr. J with the results, and she can recommend what we need to do. Um, I can set up for x-rays, I can do the dentals, um, all under her supervision. And she is willing to help us, um, not just, not just the one day a week, but if need to be, another day or whatever, she is very willing to come and help us.
Tired of running the practice, basically.
Yeah, she's just, she just wants to downsize. Um, she's still going to do some house call services, but she wants to do more, um, at-home mutations. And then for everything else, she is very willing to help the shelter, do whatever needs to be, as she has since '06.
Is the, is the van a, uh, is it a viable thing? Is it, it's in good enough shape?
It is, it's a 2006 that Dr. Jacobson bought new. She actually, she had it built to her specifications in Ohio. So she's, she's had it since it was brand new. It's, it's a, it's a Ford, it's basically an RV that's been outfitted to be a mobile clinic. And it's a, it's on a Ford F-450 chassis and it's got a six-liter diesel engine. It's got a, a diesel on and backup generator.
So you wouldn't need to move this around, just be fixed up?
We wouldn't need to move it around. There are, Gina's got some creative ideas on some things we can do to generate some revenue um, for the shelter, you know, a few times a year or something. So if that were to pan out, then it would leave the property periodically. But most of the time, it would stay on the animal shelter property.
As part of that rabies clinics?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. So, I, you know, public work staff, we, we, we've looked over the unit. It looks to be in good shape. Everything seems to work. There's a couple of things. One, the roof AC unit is not working, but Dr. Jacobson said she has a new one and it'll be installed even before, before she sells it to whoever she sold it to.
So basically, that's just works on power right from the, right from the-
Dr. Jacobson runs the generator for the most part. But, but we could, if it's staying at the shelter, we'd plug it in directly.
Sure.
To save some hours on the generator.
About the same token, it's good to run that generator too.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. So, so the, so the issue is this, and this is kind of how we see this possibly working. We think we can get the 90, possibly 85,000. And, and, and meeting with Gina, uh, more than I even want to say. We feel like we can, Gina feels certain that we can eliminate one full-time position that's currently funded in the animal shelter budget. And just that one position alone would pay for this purchase in a little less than three years. We have a second full-time position that's also vacant at the moment. And what we would suggest is that we hold on to that position. So we eliminate one completely, we hold on to the other one, let us get through a year or so and see how it goes. And then there is a possibility, um, that both those positions could be eliminated.
What, what's the connection between the, the vet van and the position? I didn't-
If we don't have this clinic, then we're going to need more staff to be trucking animals to God knows where.
So it's at, and it works.
Yes, sir.
Is there any chance for a, a fund drive to get volunteers to pick up the tab on this? It's a nice, uh, visible project that people might, uh-
I, I can let Gina speak.
I can certainly try.
I'm just, I'm just thinking that this is, you know, something that, we've had people make big donations for other segments of the, of the shelter. And maybe even just a matching thing might, might help to, to defray some of the costs. We have a lot of people who are invested in the shelter personally. And that might, that might help to, to work the fundraising drive.
So with you saying that, one of my bright ideas was, I mean, not a day, not a day goes by that we don't get a handful of calls looking for low-cost clinics. Um, I think people get animals and don't have any idea what's involved financially. When I'm doing an adoption, that's one of the main things. Even though our animals are, are ready to go, there's still care after care. So I stress that it's a huge financial responsibility. So that being said, that we get calls about clinics, but we also get calls about spay neuter facilities. Orange does not have one. So we're constantly referring them. So that's my idea for revenue is to, in the future, maybe one day a month, two days a month, anything is going to be helpful. And I think the second we advertise it, it would be booked. I really, really do.
Did you get, uh, resistance from the vets in the county for, for being, for competing with them?
It is so hard to get an appointment just in general now.
Okay, okay.
And it's, it's, I mean, the cost is-
Almost impossible to get a vet.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're not going to, they're not going to match the price.
And, and the fact that we have, you know, eight to 10 surgeries, eight to 15 surgeries a day when she's there, and she can complete that in a six-hour stand where that's eight to 15 appointments for me to have to get. And it's impossible. She had an emergency appendectomy in November and that was, that was, it was-
Dr. Jacobson?
Yes, it was amazing. We didn't have her for three weeks, four weeks. And it was so hard to get appointments. So what did that do? It backlogged us with our animals. They sat, they get more stressed, there's anxiety, they become less adoptable. It's a terrible chain. So-
Was that not in her clinic?
What's that?
I don't heard that.
No, no. So, um, that was an eye-opener when that happened. It was-
Surgery?
Just a more detailed.
Oh, just a more detailed.
Her surgery. Your surgery, right?
First I called an animal health.
Wow. Yeah, that's the one I experimented with.
Do you have a, a, a cost comparison at all other than going to be expensive? Don't think this. What, what, what it looks like for us to purchase this unit and provide as much in-house care as possible versus having to go out? I know it's expensive, but-
Yeah, well, I, I don't have an exact answer to that question. Now, here, here's what I will say. It, it, you know, Gina and I created next year's budget, I don't know, a week or two ago. Ended it all. Still having discussions about this. The, the challenge, the challenge is just estimating how many animals we're talking about over the course of a year. We can project out something like that. But she would have a good example in that one three-week-to-a-month period that Dr. Jacobson was out. The, the vet bills we were getting were like astronomical.
Tripled, tripled to quadrupled what we pay her.
So, so I think in general, what I can say is, there are a couple nine items in the tune of $70,000 to $80,000 currently in the animal shelter budget. We'd have to probably triple.
Okay, that, that's what I was looking for. A comparison there.
I guess the, I'd like to see a two-part commitment. One, uh, you know, definitive price on buying the vehicle, obviously. But also what level of commitment we would get from Dr. Jacobson to continue. Because I think we would, it makes most sense if it, if it involves a continuation of her service as well.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Both have to be-
That had to be part of it. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Then, just a question to go along with her staying. And with you as a county employee, if, if we're to take on this clinic, is there an interest? Is it something that might be worthwhile to have an on-staff vet in the future? And I don't know if Elizabeth is somebody that would be interested in entertaining something like that. I mean, if we're looking at costs here and we're, we're going to spend $90,000 for a clinic, we've been paying Dr. Jacobson for X number of years as a subcontractor. And I don't know, I'm just asking a question. Would it be worth going with a staff vet in the future?
Let me answer. Go ahead. The best way that I can answer that is to say this. Yes, I do think it's worthwhile, I'll look into it. But I will also say that the challenge will be to find the right person because it's part of, it's part of the situation that Gina and I have talked about. You have a private veterinarian. They have a different mindset on treating animals as, as opposed to the animal shelter at times. So if we were to find somebody that would be like our full-time vet, we'd need to make sure that they were on board with-
The right philosophy.
Shelter medicine.
Right.
Right.
And that's, I'm not saying we should or shouldn't do it, it's just a thought process.
Yes. And certainly, that would be one of the things that we look into in these two years or so that we have to.
We're sharing with other localities something like that, because there, other places have the same general issue.
Yes, sir. So if I may, the last thing, you know, I spoke with Ted, I spoke with Glenda about if the board was receptive to purchasing this, this mobile clinic, how we might fund it, and then realize savings down the road with the shelter. And I think Glenda's suggestion would be perhaps general fund balance.
What's your timeframe? Yep. Is this an immediate decision? You need to move around?
Dr. Jacobson, she's.
She is ready to, yeah, she's ready to move on this.
Any other thoughts, gentlemen?
Sounds like we don't have a lot of time to cogitate on this.
It sounds like it is the more financially prudent direction to go.
Is, is the right next step to bring us a, a budget-related action item at the next meeting or something like that? Sounds like that's.
This is in. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, very much.
All right.
Work session's over, we'll take about a three-minute break before the board meeting. All board's super class is meeting to order. Everyone who joined me in the place of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me in a moment of silence and remember supervisor S T O. At this time, I'll start with District One. Mr. Johnson, did you have any words to say?
Well, Teal Goodwin leaves a really big hole in the middle of this board, quite, quite literally, also figuratively. He was a, a quiet man. He didn't say a whole lot, but he was a big part of this board in what we've been able to get accomplished over the last number of years. And it's really, it's difficult to really put it, come up with the words that do justice to him. Over the years, at a number of opportunities, I've quoted people like Thomas Jefferson and James Madison, and that, Teal would joke about that and kid me about that. So I, I, I wanted to do that today, and I, I, the perfect quote popped into my head. You all know it, or at least know part of it. It's from Theodore Roosevelt. I think it was in nineteen ten that he said these words, and oddly enough, he was, he was in Paris, France, when he, when he said, he said, "It's not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. Credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marked by dust, sweat, and blood, who strives valiantly, who errs and comes up short again and again, because there's no effort without error and shortcoming, but who does actually strive to do the deeds, who knows the great enthusiasms, the great devotions, who spends himself in a worthy cause, who at the best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement, and who at worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly, so his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who know neither victory nor defeat." And again, both literally and figuratively, Teal has been in the arena the last several years, and I don't know how any human could have handled it better with more dignity and grace than Teal did. And I will, I'll miss him in, in Orange County.
Mr. White.
Yeah, I think Mark is on, on the right track. When, when I think of Teal and the conversations that we've had as a board over the past, in my case, you know, coming on nine years, Teal was there for all of those. And probably the, the legacy that needs to be written is that the, the membership of this board, because of continuity, was able to find ways of tackling some rather major issues that the county has faced, and go down the list. I mean, you know, some of them are very visible, things like the, the new radio system, the public safety building, broadband, and, and the like. Some of them are, are less visible, where we rewrote a lot of ordinances, changed our, our approach to some things. And, you know, the, the, the board, because of the, the continuity and the different points of view, and the, the respect for, for the citizens of the county and trying to find the best way forward. And, and that's, that's the legacy, I think, that Teal, you know, is part of and needs to be part of. Unfortunately, you know, the timing was such that we didn't bring you to conclusion some of these major initiatives that, that he was part of, but he's part of them even going forward. And, and I think that's, that's the, the message that needs to be shouted loudly and never forgotten.
Mr. Fram.
I made most of my comments at his funeral. I might say that I came down here as a carpetbagger from the north. If you call Northern Virginia north, and I learned an awful lot about rural counties from Teal, and I appreciate that, and I'll miss him very much. He and I worked together thirteen years here, and that was a useful time for him, for me, and for the county especially.
I could echo everything that all three of you have said. I actually consider Teal a very close friend, and in many ways, he's part of our family. And I, I had a reporter call me when we were still very much in mourning over Teal, and wanted to get a more complete story about his passing. And fortunately, I had a county administrator to vent to for a moment, because I, as you all know, have a habit of not containing my displeasure with something. And bottom line, Teal was absolutely family, and I never had any intentions of becoming friends with any of you, and I ended up becoming friends with all of you. And Teal taught me quite a bit, and I will truly miss him, but I do consider him. All right, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, one more comment I would like to make. Mr. Fram mentioned that he addressed the, the, those who were, who had gathered last Wednesday, and I do want to just mention that he did an outstanding job. Your, your remarks were spot on, and I enjoyed listening to them, and they were very appropriate.
Okay. I'd actually like for you to say one more thing, Mr. Johnson. You, you sent out an email regarding the longevity of the board. Could you just recap that quickly? Because I think that's a very poignant.
Well, two things. Of course, Lee and Teal served together for thirteen years, which, while not the longest duo in the history of the county, it's one of the longer ones. But I think what you're specifically speaking of is the fact that the five of us served together for six years and five months, and that is, as hard as it is to believe, in a hundred and fifty years, that is the longest stretch where the board did not see any turnover at all.
Absolutely. All right, gentlemen, thank you very much. At this point, we'll move on to our organizational meeting. Mr. Wardes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. And in keeping with that tradition of long tenure, here we are at the beginning of a new year. And in accordance with the Code of Virginia and the bylaws of the Orange County Board of Supervisors, it is appropriate to elect a chairman for this calendar year. With that, I'll accept nominations for the position of chairman.
I nominate Jim Croger.
Second. Any other, are there other nominations? No.
I must rethink this. I think the nomination should be closed.
Do, do we have a motion to close the nominations? All those in favor of closing the nominations, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The nominations are closed. All those in favor of Jim Croger being chairman for the twenty twenty-one calendar year, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The ayes have it, Mr. Croger, you are the chairman. And I'll turn the back, the non-gavel back over to you.
Thank you, sir. We, we are now at the point of the election of the vice chairman. Are there any nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Mark Johnson.
Any other nominations?
I will second that.
The nomination should be closed.
In that case, all in favor of Mark Johnson as the vice chair?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Congratulations, Mr. Johnson. Now we need to do the appointment of the clerk and the chief deputy clerk. I would so like to appoint Mr. Ted Wardes as the clerk and Allison Simpson as the deputy clerk.
Second that.
Any other?
The nomination should be closed.
Okay. All in favor of those nominations, appointments?
Mr. Chairman, we do have a resolution on that if the board wishes to adopt it. That would typically require a roll call, though, if it's a resolution.
Okay. You know, I'd like to rethink that nomination.
Appointment.
Okay.
Too late, too late.
Yes. Okay. In that case, I don't have it in front of me, but the, I don't think there is a resolution.
Did we need the roll call of the others?
No.
So this is the only one that would be roll called.
All right. Simpson.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a roll call in this resolution?
Starting, Mr. Croger. You are the first on the roll call.
Oh, aye.
Mr. Fram.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
And Mr. White.
Aye.
Four zero.
Thank you. I just want an additional comment going back. That, that reporter couldn't believe that we had a board that was so concerned about each other. each other. He's apparently used to dealing with boards that have personalities that refuse to get along. So once again, even though we do add a little bit of humor to our meetings occasionally, it is important to recognize that we take our job very seriously. All right. Next, we have a resolution to establish a meeting schedule for calendar year 2021, and it is attached. And there is one, this one we can go ahead and go with. Any problem with the meeting schedule? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I've already cleared it with Lake of the Woods for the November 17th. They're, they're ready to serve us dinner. If we're still serving dinner by that time, yes.
Any other, any conflicts, annuncies? If not, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. All right. And does this require a roll call?
Yes, resolution, by resolution and ordinance, yes, sir.
Okay. I think you would do so, Ms. Simpson.
Sure thing. Mr. White.
Aye.
Mr. Crozier.
Aye.
Mr. Fram.
Aye.
And Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Four zero.
Next is to annual review of our bylaws. Is there anything that any of the other board members needs to be changed or clarified?
I would just ask our attorney that with all the changes we make because of the, the COVID and the remote meetings and stuff like that, does that say what we're talking about, the Virginia Code and the amendments there, too? Does that cover us?
Yeah, well, in the bylaws, the, the emergency ordinance we adopted actually trumps our bylaws, so it doesn't matter.
Okay, all right. Okay, so all right.
So outside of the emergency ordinance, there is still a provision in the bylaws for the board to participate remotely up to two meetings a year.
Yeah, I, I saw that, I just, okay.
All right. There's one other thing that I wanted to make sure that we address. We're not there yet, but we will be changing the location of our board meetings, and it currently states in the Gordon Building. I wanted to make sure that we amend that to the Gordon Building until such time as we relocate to the Public Safety Building.
Yeah, you can always change that, I know you're right.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we, we have that.
Because, because who knows when that?
Well, I, and that's why I didn't get the date, you know, then, so. Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Just to get a roll call as well? No? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed. Four zero. All right. Moving right on, on to QF, which is the appointment of board members to various boards, commissions, committees, and organizations. At the present time, unless there is objection, we will leave Mr. Goodwin's appointments vacant, and if there is a need, we can have one of the board members fill in for him.
Do we need anybody to cover any of those areas that, I mean, now you already have somebody on the Joint School Board Capital and the Economic Development. Have we got a board member on each one of those?
I was gonna volunteer and suggest that on the, on the School Board Liaison and the, and the School Board Capital Improvement Program Subcommittee, that I take Teal's position on those simply because Jim and I are already working with schools on the financial side of it, and Jim, I think, is on both of those committees themselves.
Okay.
They're sort of all supplementary.
I will volunteer to pick up on the airport commission at least until somebody comes in to retake Teal's place.
Okay. Not a problem, so we're, we're good with all of this. Is everyone acceptable with their, their committees, board?
I just, just want to raise that, the, there's, at the top of the page, you see a broadband policy subcommittee. When I saw that, I, I paused, and I'm not certain that that's a needed or functioning committee or subcommittee any longer, given that the makeup of the, the actual board of the broadband authority itself. And so I just wanted to point to that for a moment of conversation.
So that should be, that should be deleted because it's already covered by the authorities.
I'm, I'm thinking that that's the case, yeah.
And then the other one, is there anything further for the Public Safety Facility Design Committee to do?
Yeah, we've still got some things to do. We have, I don't think, they haven't finished giving us all the stuff that they want to do in the interior yet.
Okay. Very good, we will leave that.
Yeah, I did talk about that, but it broke that.
Right, yeah.
It's superfluous a little bit.
So we're deleting that, then.
Events have surpassed the.
All right, very good.
Also helps keep the two separate.
Yes, I, I'll go ahead and entertain the motion to approve.
Motion to approve is modified.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. This is again, all right. And Mr. Voorhees, is Mrs. Van Sanford coming in or not?
She is participating on Zoom as well as our auditors with P D Mayor.
Okay, well, next thing then is our owner spotlight.
Adoption of the agenda.
I'm sorry, what?
Adoption of the agenda. Sorry.
I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
All right. Aye. Yes. I, I, I'm going between paper and computers.
See, we know you're a rookie chairman, you've been chatting for, for 20 minutes.
And that's exactly what it feels like, too, Mr. White.
About 15 months.
And I will refrain from stating I was going to make it, Mr. Johnson, just to make you feel better.
Good reason.
All right. Next. Special presentations and appearances. Hi there, Emily, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you so much for having me tonight.
Here's your, your, your five minutes in the spotlight.
Five minutes in the spotlight, all right. So I'm the owner of the Lightwell Restaurant, right down here on 110 East Main Street. We just turned 10 at the beginning of December, so we've made it 10 years. We're pretty proud of that, especially going through this last year of COVID. I think that's a pretty big deal. We are very thankful mainly for all of the local support throughout all of this, has been insane. The local grants and loans and all that have been, would have, you know, saved us, honestly. But, you know, we're trucking along, doing the best that we can, and hoping this all goes away soon.
Good, good, glad, glad that you're there. Just out of curiosity, what is your family size now, and what will it be in the near future?
My personal family or the family of the restaurant?
No, your personal family.
My personal family, so I have my parents, Buzz and Marty, and I have myself and my two brothers, and then I'm married. I have a almost four-year-old son, and then both my brothers have kids, one has three and one has two, so we're getting up there.
Very good, very good. Basically, a locally homegrown family, correct?
Oh, definitely, yep, yep, definitely, all the way around. But yeah, it's, it's been a great experience so far, and, and, you know, we look forward to 10 more, so thank you all for all the support.
Good. Anybody have any comments?
I always appreciate going there when I come down here to the town, do, that's a nice place, I like to stop.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Very good, thank you so much, Emily.
Thank you, guys, have a great evening.
Take care.
Wasn't that something Teal wanted to do, get us back to the business spotlights?
Yes.
All right. I guess next, do we have P D Mayor at home?
Yes.
Next is the presentation of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Betsy Heather.
Good evening. Joining me this evening is Andrea Nichols, the manager on the audit engagement. As we all know, 2020 was full of challenges, but conducting your audit was not one, and I know that Andrea has a few words that she would like to share about that. Hello, I'm Andrea, I'm the audit manager on the engagement, and I'm more involved in the day-to-day logistics of the audit, so I wanted to just give you a brief overview of, a reminder of the different phases of the audit, and then speak a little bit about the unique challenges of this year specifically. So looking at the audit process, it can really be broken out into three distinct phases. We first begin in the spring, prior to year-end, and this is when we look at the internal control understandings and really develop an understanding of all of the key transaction cycles throughout the county and all the various departments. Examples would be things such as payroll, accounts receivable, accounts payable, revenue, things like that, just to name a few. So as we obtain an understanding of those controls, then we perform tests over the key controls, and then all of that combined feeds into our plan for our substantive testing in the second phase, which occurs in the fall after the fiscal year-end has been completed and management has finalized all of the audit adjustments and, and all the numbers that feed into that. And then that's really the, the meat of the audit, our substantive testing. And then when that's finished, then we move into the report phase, and this is when, in conjunction with county and school finance, we prepare the CAFER, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and this year that had a state reporting deadline to the auditor of public accounts of December 15th. So that's just a broad overview of the different phases of the audit. This year specifically, we know was very challenging all around. Certainly every locality that we've audited has experienced some difficulty related to the pandemic, so you're definitely not alone with that. As a result of COVID precautions, we did conduct the audit remotely this year, and I wanted to assure you that we did extra procedures to assess the internal controls both before the pandemic happened and after, to evaluate, were there any changes as a result of personnel or departments going remotely, changes in how certain approvals would have been done? And as Betsy can attest here in just a moment, we found no material issues with that, and across the board, everyone was extremely cooperative and creative and flexible when it came to utilizing new technologies and new approaches and doing things in a way that perhaps they hadn't been done before. And collectively, we all came together to get the audit out the door, and I just want to give a big thanks in particular to Sarah and everyone in her finance department, and then also to schools, social services, and all of the other departments throughout the building. So again, thank you very much, and I will turn it back over to Betsy.
Okay, thank you, Andrea. As Andrea said, really thanks to everybody, because although we had to change the logistics and the, and maybe the method that we conducted the audit, we still were able to perform all the same procedures and the necessary procedures that we needed to do to be able to opine on the financial statements and meet the APA's deadline, so kudos to everyone for that. So results of the audit, we have issued an unmodified opinion on the county's Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2020. As you know, an unmodified opinion is a clean opinion. The other report that we have issued is located in the back of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report in the compliance section, and that report is our report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance based on an audit performed in accordance with government auditing standards. And we did report one finding there that was related to the school board. Just as a reminder, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report is broken down into four sections, an introductory section, a financial section, a statistical section, and a compliance section. And one area that you might want, if you don't have time to look at every single page of that large document, you might want to refer to the management's discussion and analysis, and that's the first component of the financial section, and it really provides a financial summary of the fiscal year. And then I always like to refer to the statistical section in the back, because that's one place that you can see some 10-year financial trend data for some comparatives year over year. Lastly, you should have a copy of our document titled Results of the Audit, which includes an overview of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report from a very high level, our required communications under government auditing standards. So if we would have had issues conducting the audit and had disagreements with management or anything like that, it would have been reported in that document, and we did not. As I said, the audit went very smoothly, all things considered. That document also includes our management letter, and in years past, we issued the required communications document separately from the management letter, but this year we consolidated all into one deliverable. And one comment about our management letter, we included some observations and some recommendations that were identified during our audit work. None of those do we consider to be material findings. If they were material findings, they would be reported in the back of the compliance section in the CAFER. So there's just some items to consider that we suggest, nothing that you have to do, but just some things that we'd like to call your attention to. And also in that management letter, there is a list of upcoming governmental accounting standards, boards pronouncements, there's a bunch that needs to be evaluated in the future as we get closer to implementation dates. Just, and, and also in that document, Results of the Audit, we included some current information about our firm and our government niche, in case you're interested in that. So are there any questions for us? Instead of going through that document page by page, I just wanted to highlight the contents of what's in it, when you do have an opportunity to, to look at it.
Good, thank you. Any questions?
I guess the one question I had was, the last point that you made there, Betsy, was the, the changes in the, in the guidance and, and the like, is there anything that you want to point to that we need to be aware of and prepared to do differently or more extensively or whatever? Any, any of those changes have a, have the kind of impact that, that needs, that we need to be aware of and anticipate? I'm sure Linda and Sarah and others are, are well aware of them, but this is not something we do every day, so.
Sure. There are certain ones, and I really think the effort's gonna fall, will follow in finance in conjunction with, with the auditors. There are two that are upcoming. GAZV 84 changes the way that we classify agency funds, and Orange, or your county does not have a lot of those, where we have to go back in and reclassify and figure out what fund type it meets, but we have other clients that have a lot of agency funds, and we're gonna have a lot of work on, on, with them to do, but I don't think the county, your county, will have a lot of effort that they have to put towards that one. But the other big one is related to leases, and we have already had some preliminary conversations, and we have a, a free training day that I know Sarah has participated in every year, and the last two years, we've had a session on GAZV 87 and the lease implementation. That one's gonna require a little more information gathering and to evaluate how we need to pull leases now onto the books, because they will be treated differently than what they have in the past. So, you know, that's kind of the point of our management letter, is to make sure that we are pointing those upcoming pronouncements out early, so that together we have enough time to make sure that we have a plan in place to get them implemented by the due date.
Very good. Anyone else? Ladies, thank you very much.
Thank you. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to serve as the county's auditors, and again, many thanks to all the departments and the cooperation that was extended to us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Okay. All right. Item five is the consent agenda. I just want to make sure that within the consent agenda, there are two corrections that everyone should have received a copy of, ones from the December 1st meeting, ones from the December 15th meeting, both are the minutes of our board meetings. Make questions, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved. Second vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed. Four and nothing. All right, next is Mr. Hilton Breagan, Authorization of Delta Airport Consultants, Taskmaster number nine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The memo kind of speaks for itself, we were finally at the point of, we're getting We were finally at the point where we're getting into clear these instructions. Delta has proposed a task order for construction administration services and survey for a total of $215,000. We did an independent fee, or had an independent fee estimate done, and it came back within the parameters required by FAA, SBD 10%. It was within 2%. I mentioned in this, when this board packet went out, I had sent everything to the FAA, the proposal, the IFE, all that, and our recommendation. Friday last week, I received that, and it's concurrent. So, I had everything in hand from the FAA standpoint and the grant folks' standpoint. So, I'm just here seeking board approval to execute the task order.
I have a question with regard to the, it probably gets into the Next Agenda item, but we go ahead and we trim all these trees down to the appropriate level.
Yes, sir.
How often do we need to check that? Is there a process then for?
The state, the state does a check every year, once a year. And once those instructions grow back in, then they'll have to address it. I will say, moving forward, they're not going to be eligible for federal money the next program, but state maintenance will kick in for that, which is typically an 80% state.
How often, I mean, is there any experience in terms of whether this happens every two years or five years, or what?
You know, our hope is, it's like 10 years. But unfortunately, if you recall, a couple of the properties that we were able to secure, navigation easements on, those folks did not want to provide a buffer because typically, what we try to secure is 10 feet below the actual surface. And a couple of folks did not, would not provide a 10-foot buffer. They provided two feet of buffer. So, a couple of properties, we're probably gonna have to be back on every three or four years.
Okay. If not, entertain a motion. So moved. Second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes four to nothing. All right, Mr. Hilton, right? Next is the Board of Contract MTN Enterprises LLC for airport construction removal.
Yes, sir. Along those same lines, we solicited bids. We received two bids for the project. I believe I provided in the packet the attachment that shows Delta Airport Consultants' review letter. And I wanted to point out that there, in the original bid, there were some discrepancies on the low bid, primarily with a unit cost for correction out of aggregate. And if we would have extended their unit costs, if they had the words right, then they had the numbers wrong. But we have confirmed with them that the $2,000 was their total bid price for that line and not $200,000. So, we have confirmed, we've gone through the whole business on them, and they have confirmed that their bid is valid at $298,375. And I also mentioned in the memo that Delta has worked with this firm on other airport projects. And one in particular was almost exactly the same size of clearance, what we're doing. And Delta reports that that project went well, so. All right. You see, I reasoned that a total of.
Motion to approve. Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes four to nothing. Thank you very much, Chair. All right. Then, the next one is the Adoption of a Memorandum of Understanding and Business Associate Agreement with the Broadband Authority. And I'm going to present that, since Mr. Lenson's not here, Mr. Lex, we will be taking care of this.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is just a simple, two-page, basically, agreement that just simply allows the broadband, it's an MOU with broadband authority, for certain benefits for its employees. When entering an MOU, they receive the same county benefits that they, county employees receive. And pretty straightforward, if anybody had any questions.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes four to nothing. Thank you, Mr. Lex. The next one is the Line of Credit Agreement with the Broadband Authority. Linda, I there, you were hiding behind this.
I didn't know you knew I was here. This is just in response to a request from the Orange County Broadband Authority. As you know, we've been discussing another potential borrowing for the Broadband Authority to continue construction as we go into the spring. We're working with our financial advisors, Davenport Company, right now, and they're looking into several options. One being the Virginia Resources Authority as a way to borrow additional funds. Another being another direct borrowing, or through the county's name, like we did in last July. Another being that the Broadband Authority could potentially borrow on their own if they can, you know, talk to some of the financial institutions and get enough interest. So, they're just trying to work through that. But in the meantime, we want to make sure that the Broadband Authority continues to have capital available so they're not slowed down in their construction of the network throughout the county, and they can hook up customers. So, what this would do was, would be to enable the county to provide up to $2 million in a credit line to the Broadband Authority. The way the agreement was drafted by the county attorney's office, it would be interest-free as long as it's paid back by April 1st, which was when we expect to be able to do the financing at that time. After that, it would be 2% per year.
I think we're all making 10%. But the top sheet is scheduled as 10%. But they have their own website, too.
The end result would be, if the financing bill is done in the county's name, then we've also included a reimbursement resolution so that the county is basically reimbursing itself for up to $2 million prior to giving the Broadband Authority the remaining funds. If the Broadband Authority ends up issuing the debt, then, of course, they would just pay the county back directly. But the way this was written, we felt like it will cover bits and areas.
And we're comfortable with that April 1st date?
We can always amend it if we need to. I mean, if we get close to April and it's a problem, we can amend it out to May or June.
Apparently, the Davenport is comfortable that closing could take place by then. I agree, it's a little odd. But the last one didn't take that long. Once they actually issued the call, it was just a matter of a few weeks, and it was done.
We can make a motion. I mean, change April to June if you want.
I mean, we've basically provided them with all the information that they would.
I would think we'd be better extending it so that we're done, look like we have to keep, you know.
I think, I agree, I think it's a good idea because the major vision from the county's perspective is this allows the county to, in effect, pay itself back from the proceeds of the bar term, which is the goal.
Yeah, but I think the idea, if we had to keep extending this for any reason, it just doesn't look good.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the two logical choices are May, one, June, and so.
I would entertain a motion with additional verbiage.
What is, is that what you want to do? June, or so. Correct. So, change April to June.
Is that your motion?
No, I'm only waiting for those guys to make the motion on this. I'm like, how's that?
Any further discussion? All right. Does this need to be a roll call?
No.
Just, I just, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four to nothing. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. And then, next is old business. I guess, Amanda, are you doing this?
Stephanie's on the line.
Oh, oh, there, Stephanie, I didn't see that. This is going to be adoption. Yes, adoption of the revised procurement, surplus disposition, and vendor department policies.
Good evening.
No, I can say all those words, didn't you?
Gentlemen, before you, we have the updated policies that we discussed at the December 15th board meeting. And we've highlighted the significant changes in a table at the bottom of the memo. I'd also like to point out that there was a typo. Thank you to Mr. Frame for catching it, in our Surplus Policy, Section 1.03. It should be amended to show that threshold at $50,000, which was what the board suggested the change be made in December. And it currently reflects $10,000, so that will be amended.
Good. Any questions or discussions for Stephanie?
Motion to approve is, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes four to nothing. Thank you so much for your comment, Stephanie.
Thanks.
She's sitting here.
Exactly. Snuck in behind you. I wonder if I didn't see it. And the whole time, I'm sitting there looking at Amanda.
I was prepared. I can't see her from back here.
Very good. All right. I see no Department Director or Constitutional Officer reports. County Attorney report. Mr. Lex.
Yeah, I actually do have a report this evening, Mr. Chairman. Back in 2012, when the board interviewed me, they then assigned Teal Goodwin to do a second interview. I got a phone call asking, would I rather go to the barbecue place or the French place? I picked the barbecue, which Teal told me I picked wisely. And that was a test. But I wanted to share two things Teal asked me at that interview. He said, well, two comments he made. One, if we hire you, don't embarrass us, which I think we're mostly okay on. And the other one, he said, is, and we don't want you talking all the time. And so, I want to point out this, I think my first county attorney report in months, in honor of Mr. Goodwin.
Really good. Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Jorgez, Administrator Report.
I'm gonna read the room, no report.
Oh, my goodness. Very good. We'll go to Board Comment, starting over with District One. Do you have anything, Mr. Johnson, in addition to what the board talked about?
Oh, I do have a board comment, and it's not touchy-feely and heavy. I had occasion to go out to Unionville over the weekend. I didn't tell Mr. White about this, and I felt I'd be safe going.
I had to issue visas for sex. This is, you understand.
And I was.
I was trying to claim territory.
Be districting the coming up, so. I think that might be District One East, the next election.
I understand, it's a scouting explanation.
I was, in all seriousness, I was really shocked and disappointed by the condition of the Dollar General store. That building is, we approved it six years ago this week. And so, it's less than six years old, and it's falling apart, from what I can see. Hardyboard plank is falling off the front of the building.
For the second time, sir.
And if you walk around the building, there's a lot of it that looks like it's gonna fall off. And the fence is, the security fence is apparently of an extremely inferior type because it's already sagging and, you know, risking a 15 or 20-degree angle. And hopefully, those things will be fixed in this particular case. I don't know how you, I understand the fence. I'm not sure how you managed to apply hardyboard and have it fall off in a few years. But what it's really made me think of is that, you know, very often, almost every major rezoning that we do, one of the issues is, well, what is this gonna look like? How's it impact the neighborhood and so forth and so on? And contractors, good, bad, and indifferent, have always got a story to tell that make it rosy, and we're gonna do this, and we're gonna do that. And it seems that the county needs some kind of standards. And I'm not talking about standards that everybody has to go by, but standards that when we're considering a rezoning and when the appearance of the building is critical to how we're voting on that rezoning, we need to know what the person's actually agreeing to. So, you know, I don't know how you, I don't know how you do this from a building code standpoint, or whether this is something that would go into the zoning document. I don't know, I don't have the answers to all that. This is kind of step one, like we talked earlier about animals. This is step one. How we get there, I don't know. Mr. Grocer just.
There is something there, it's called the maintenance code.
Well, but there should be a.
A step before that.
There should be a step before that because a five-year-old building shouldn't need much maintenance, other than, you know. The roofing. I don't know what they, I don't know if they glued the stuff up or what they did. But there's, I had some hardyboard put on a building 15 years ago. It looks just like it did when they put it on there. It doesn't look any different from oak siding that you might put up there. And so, it's, in terms of its reliability, it's not hardyboard, it's not his fault. It is the fault of whoever installed it. And of course, when we talk about privacy fence, privacy fence sounds good if you all sort of have a picture in your mind about what a privacy fence is. But, for instance, the privacy fence that's out behind this building is much better than the privacy fence that was installed out there. And this is for a little short, you know, goes around our heating units. That fence out there has got, it's got a two-by-four at the top and bottom, and one in the middle. Well, it's a six-foot fence. You know, it's just not enough, there's just not enough structure there to keep it, to keep it up. Unless you, I mean, maybe if you put, well, I don't know. If you put posts every 48 inches, probably, then you could, you would do okay. So, anyway, I would like to see, we have enough to do, but I would like to see us consider ways that we can have some standards where when someone who comes in who wants to rezone or perhaps do a special use permit, we can actually know what it is we're talking about. What are you gonna do? I mean, when they say they're gonna put up two rows of Cleveland Cypress, we pretty much all know what that means. But some of these other terms are just.
We already have the tool, we just gotta use it, which is proffers. We can require a developer to proffer the exact specifications. In fact, that's, in Lanko County, develops everything by proffers. And I mean, down to the minute detail of what plants and how tall they're gonna be and how far apart they're gonna be. And so, we could, you know, maybe one of the things to do is instruct the planning commission to work on an internal policy document that we're gonna, in the future, expect all design proposals to be in the form of proffers that are enforceable.
Can we also, I think to, one of ours, but can we also add some time to that? That those, that the conditions contemplated by the proffers will remain, at least in that.
Well, yeah, absolutely, because the proffers become part of the zoning. So, if your proffer is brick front or a brick building, and the brick starts falling down, you're now in violation of your proffer.
Zoning violation.
Yes, and now we have zoning violation, and we can file a suit for a zoning violation because your brick is missing that you proffered would be there, or your hardy plank is missing that you proffered would be there.
And I would suggest that there's a possibility we'll look at it, on this case, of looking at exactly what was in the approval and see if there's a site plan violation by just failing to.
I don't know that we did proffers back then, though.
Well, there were things proffered, but the thing is.
We missed that detail of specificity.
You proffered that I'm gonna put a big rock out in front, okay? We don't have in there that the rock is gonna weigh three tons or 15 tons. It's just a big rock. So, he, you know, it was proffered that there was gonna be brick on the front, and that the rest of it was gonna be hardyboard. It didn't occur to any of us that we would have to specify and the hardyboard has to stay up there.
But I think it's a zoning violation. If he proffered hardy and it's falling off, then I think he's got enough violation.
Well.
Let us look at that.
I mean, I'm more than happy to go. Great face.
And, you know, the security fence, well, the security. And, 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 you know, the security fence, well, the security fence is up there. I can't, I can't say that he didn't put the security fence up. The security fence is up there. It's just a really cheap one that's, and/or not installed properly. And it, and it tells us events. I mean, look off.
We'll take a look at it.
Absolutely does.
And I would think that Dollar General would be less than thrilled about the situation, but, yeah. Perhaps that's not a priority.
Probably only become a fifty cent general.
Right now, Chesapeake you can talk to.
Hey, Hunch, yes. Mr. White?
No.
Mr. Frame?
Uh, yeah, we were talking about reexamining our reassessment process.
Reexamine it or moving forward to a different...
Well, whatever. But, uh, do we have anything on track? Has anything happened, or do we need to, uh, use a kettle pot or something? I don't know.
I'll, I'll look at Mr. Borjes, and I'll peek, peek around the screen here as well.
Thank you for that question, Mr. Frame. Mr. Rob is, is doing research with some of our, uh, peer jurisdictions, gathering information about process and opportunities. We are particularly interested in the idea of using some of the technologies that might be out there in the real estate industries that might help with, with, a, a different method than being able to sort of drive around in a, in a county car and look out the window. When, when we know that there are several applications you could get on your smartphone that can give you a market estimate, what, 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 what needs to change and make that, um, you know, more part of what we do? And so those are some of the facts we're trying to get.
Because I, I don't think this is gonna be an, an easy thing to, to go ahead and do. So, uh, given that, uh, we've just recently done that, I think the sooner we get something on track so that we understand where we're going. Because I suspect there's gonna be some differences between individuals or, or how, how this would be run. And I'd just like to get something, make, make sure we got something moving on it.
The last time it was discussed in December, you all asked Stephanie to come back for a work session in the beginning of February. So we have that penciled in for your first meeting in February.
Right. Thank you. Mr. White?
It's only penciled in.
Well, at least the pencil hit the paper.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to point out one thing, just a little different from a board comment, but I, I have recently received, uh, calls about the solar project on our southeastern border, I guess I'll call it. It appears that while there was a small, short period of things beginning to settle down, that's no longer the case. They're now, uh, very active. They're, they're making private property, mud all over the roads, all sorts of different things. And I know there's a, there's an ongoing situation there, but I just wanna remind us all that that, that's an issue that is not yet resolved. And apparently has, has not found a lasting, uh, had a lasting impact on the developer of the project.
Apparently, responsible, and the courts shut down again end of last week, beginning of this week. So, uh, yes, it, it is something that, um, absurd. I know we're, we're moving forward with, um, a third generation, starting construction on solar farm. I actually have a meeting tomorrow with Dominion. I know staff has been meeting their people. I am not at all happy with the direction that it appears to be going. And I'm going to let them know that tomorrow. And it would be my recommendation that if we should ever grant another special use permit for a solar array, that it be at least twice as stringent as the one that we granted before.
Well, there's some hard lessons being learned.
Yes.
By our citizens.
Yes, and the scary part about it is we're in better shape than many jurisdictions are with.
I do have one other comment.
Yes.
The CARES Act, uh, you'll notice in the, uh, the consent agenda, there was some money handed over to RSA, about sixty-seven thousand dollars. There was real concern as to whether or not that could be even distributed at times. But it has been. A hundred and forty-two different, uh, customers have received some degree of, uh, relief from their water and sewer bills. And RSA brought a couple of people on part-time to start making phone calls so that all that money got distributed to, to people who needed it. And it was like a hundred and forty-two different people with an average of about four hundred and fifty dollars per, uh, per customer that got relief. And just let you know that some of your people out there have, have benefited at least from, uh, from the funds that we have for relief.
Mr. Chairman, that reminds me of one thing I, I should mention. This is our first meeting since, but the, as you know, the county received a grant of CARES Act money to create hotspots around the county with a very tight performance window. And I'm pleased to announce that that was met a couple of days early. And, uh, glad to see the, it was quite a bit of use. I, I talked to somebody just yesterday, as it was, that, uh, learned of a hotspot even closer to their residence that they were previously aware of. And it was, they were quite thankful that they could do some things that they hadn't been able to do before. So it was an opportunity, it was a situation where I think we were well positioned because of some ongoing activities to make use of that money. And we proved we can do it.
Absolutely.
Also, um, I was informed by my pointee on the Broadband Authority that, uh, the fiber link website, uh, went live today. And, uh, so I encourage everyone to check that out. You can go in and put in your address and see if you can pre-register. I went in and put my address in, and the message that I got is, your address may be included in a future phase.
I didn't even get that.
You just got LOL, right?
It had my house in the...
I, uh, I would encourage everyone to get, to be patient as we work through this. There's a, uh, it, it's coming down the pike. It's, it's unstoppable. It's gonna happen. And it's just a matter of, of what month and what week, but it is, it is coming. And, but the website looks great. I encourage everybody to look at it.
I can't bet that nobody would even look, look at mine and say, yeah.
Exactly. I, I have one other thing. It really did not affect anyone else, although it did involve RSA. Uh, we have a situation where a private landowner filled in a dam on another landowner's property and commenced a flood of state highway. It was a very interesting situation for me for over a month. But it's taken care of now, and I have to give a big shout out to Vida. Alan Saunders did everything that he could to assist with the situation. And an even bigger shout out to Tim Clements at RSA. We were in a situation where we needed to deploy some large-volume water pumps to remove a depth of three feet of water from a state road. And, um, we were, there was only one pump available at the time for Brent. I reached out to Tim, um, and he made available a pump from RSA that had twice the pumping capacity of what we were able to procure publicly. And his people were out there, had it hooked up, checked on, and kept it fueled, and helped alleviate the problem a whole lot faster than it would have been otherwise. So just need to do a shout out to RSA for that. All right. There is no, no more board battle. We have the informational items to look at, and then appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Does anyone have any to see?
I don't have an appointment, but one of our representatives on the, uh, Community Services Board is resigning, Dave Francis is resigning. Right now, that leaves, uh, Janice Riley from the Lake and Cliff Barnes, uh, who are members. If anybody else has somebody that they would consider for that, if not, I will try to recruit somebody from my end of the county. But, uh, anybody interested in trying to find someone from their, from their districts?
Yeah, I'd love to. Finding people is difficult.
All right, I'll, I'll see if I can find somebody. Good enough?
Next item is calendar. Is there anything that we need to schedule on this calendar, Allison?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, there's one item for your consideration. And that is to schedule a public hearing for a zoning text amendment that was initiated by the board regarding a change in the setbacks on Route Twenty and identified stretch of Route Twenty in Marburgville. First available date is February ninth.
I would suggest that we go ahead and schedule it for that.
Mark, I didn't check, but Planning Commission acted on that last Thursday.
Yes, yes, they did. They approved it, yes.
Perfect.
All right. At this time, Mr. White, if you would read the words for a closing here.
Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss a closed meeting of following matter, consultation with legal counsel employed to obtain a compact body regarding specific legal matters presented to legal advice by such counsel could serve vacancy on the board. Whereas pursuant to Section two point two thirty-seven, amendment A, the record is to need such discussion made for a closed meeting, now therefore be resolved, and the Board of Supervisors of Orange County hereby authorize discussion for stated matter of closed meeting, and leave that to motion.
So moved.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are now on the close.
And we're coming back down here to adjourn.
And we're coming back down here to adjourn.
Yep, we're good.
All right. Members of the boards, through the best of your knowledge, where the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. Mr. Creighton?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
And Mr. White?
Aye.
We're zero.
We are back in open session then. And the only item that we have is we discussed in closed session, Mr. Goodwin's seat. And we would like to state that we will be advertising on the county website, as well as the local newspapers, for letters of interest to serve for interim position on the board of supervisors in Mr. Goodwin's district until the next election.
Perfect.
Anybody else have anything else they'd like to say? Okay, I will entertain one more motion.
So we move to adjournment.
Say aye.